Good evening, welcome to the Scottsville Town Council meeting recording for their regular meeting on Monday, March 21st, 2022. My name is Matt Wallace. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. This public meeting is being held in compliance with Virginia Open Meeting Laws, Freedom of Information Act, and the Town of Scottsville's ordinance on the continuity of government during the COVID-19 emergency. The meeting is being held physically at 401 Valley Street, the Town Hall. There are also several opportunities for the public to participate by telephone or online through our Zoom platform. This meeting includes a public forum and a public hearing duly advertised. The local time here now is 6:30 PM, and we have a business recognition reception starting here shortly, going until the posted start time of the meeting at 7 o'clock. So it'll get a little bit louder up in here now, so I'll mute this line. You can skip ahead on the recording 30 minutes from now. That'll be the posted start time of the meeting when our forum is assembled and come to order. If you're viewing the recording in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much.
Ready? All right, so we'll go reading the order and ask the work to call the roll.
Here.
Here.
Daniel Arista.
Here.
Meredith Hines.
Yes.
We're Bunsen.
Here.
Eddie.
There.
I'll ask everyone to stand with me, but before we have our pledge of allegiance, I would ask you just a moment of silence so we can remember our friends in Ukraine and some of them have relatives right here in Scottsville. So just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to survive, to live in peace, to honor our country, and to be a republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. I think Mr. Bullock has a motion to make regarding the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the agenda with only one small change, which would be to move item 6B to item 6A since it is our older business this evening.
I would second that.
In discussion, all in favor of the change?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. And we have a vote on the approval of the consent calendar as amended. We're here on motion, motion. To approve the consent calendar as amended. Thank you. A second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Fine, thank you. Um. Public forum. Got a lot of people here tonight. I'm sure everybody's been here before at one time or another. You, when helping the public forum, you can speak about anything you wish. When we get to these items of this on down the list for us to, it'll just be council discussion. So if you have a question pertaining to one of those, go ahead and state your, your question while you're, while you're at the public forum. I'm sure the developer would make a note of that and he would address that when he gives his presentation a little later. So anyone wishing to speak on any topic, come forward, state your name and speak.
Our first sign up one is Mr. Dan Gittit. Thank you.
Good evening all. Thank you for hospitality and I'd like to come just to speak in support of the proposed development on Bird Street as I think it has a lot of potential for nice growth within the community, particularly this promotes good urban development for walkability to our city, for the town there. I think the appropriate number being in the thirties is a good mark. I applaud the council looking to keep it in that number. So just to think it could be a really good thing to go for a lot of our businesses in the area and a good, a good example of good responsible growth. Thank you.
Can we follow Mr. Reed?
I'm Scotts real. We live on the Hatford Road and I also like to speak in favor of the development of Bird Street. We consider Scottsville to be our town, our home, even though we actually live in Elmore County. We shop here, we go to the out entertaining here, going to the restaurants, to the brewery. We volunteer here, we go to the church here and we feel that it's important that Scottsville continue its growth. It's lost fifty people in the last, fifty residents in the last ten years. And it's important that increase early stage constant. As the population decreases, the income from the county will actually decrease. There's two possible reasons. One is people working from home have the business tax that they live in Scottsville, that goes to Scottsville. If you have less people, there's less people working at home. Also, there's part of the sales taxes we paid to the town. It's related to the number of children, less people, less children, less rebate from, from Elmore. So I think it's important to keep the town growing. It's important for the population and it's important for the financial sovereignty of the town. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Comment? I think we, at our workshop last week, we did say that not all people that work from home are required to have the actual correct. That is correct. So not all people need to, if they work from home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chris?
Hello. Welcome back to Smith Street. I just wanted to update council on the cleanup we had on six. We had six volunteers, including Councilman Brettco and Bullock, as well as kind of supervisor Donna Price. And Terry Long and Carol J, a new friend to make. And over the course of four hours, we picked up eighteen bags of trash. We're also going to be in contact with Susanna County because there's some very obvious dumping going on, on that stretch of road, and it is Susanna County's road, so they need to take care of it. I was hoping other citizens would copy me and have their own mini cleanups in their neighborhoods, but unfortunately this weekend I was copied in a different way by the Citizens for Responsible Development who took a portion of an email that I wrote and copied its structure and text from it in an update that they sent to their online petition supporters. So unfortunately, we didn't get additional trash picked up around town. Also, I wanted to let Mayor Smith know that I have been in contact with Charlotte Joyner. Unfortunately, our schedules are not lining up that we can, we haven't been able to figure out the details yet. But hopefully, the senior group that she works with will be able to work on the flower pots that are here in town. And the Scottsville Center for Arts and Nature is still looking for volunteers for their event for Earth Day. They're actually going to be doing a week of events, different talks. There's going to be a fun run, a swap, a clothing swap, and then a cleanup of the whole entire town. So for those of you who do care about trash, that will be happening on Earth Day. And we're also looking for new board members. Thank you.
I agree.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Rossler and I live at 1192 Georgia Creek Road in Scottsville. I've lived at my Scottsville address for over fifteen years and although I don't live within town limits, I support the town in several ways and have a vested interest in its future. According to the 2020 census at data census, data.census.gov, the population in Scottsville in 2020 was five hundred and twenty-four, as you all know, down by forty-two people from the 2010 census, which was also down by twenty-seven people from the 2000 census. The total number of occupied housing units in 2020 was two hundred and forty-two. Six of those householders moved here in 2019 or later. Out of those six, all were renter occupied, all zero were owner occupied. Sixty-eight householders moved here between 2015 and 2018. Out of those sixty-eight, sixty-six were renter occupied, while only two were owner occupied. 2010 and 2014 were very similar, at forty-two being renter occupied and fifteen owner occupied. According to VDOT, the annual average daily traffic or AAT was thirty-eight hundred on Valley Street in 2001. In 2010, it rose by five hundred to a total of four, forty-three hundred. In 2020, the AAT rose by six hundred to a total of forty-nine hundred. Many people have pointed to an increase in traffic as a reason to deny special use permit. Traffic in Scottsville is increasing despite despite increased housing in Scottsville. Homeowners in Buckingham County and Susanna County, as well as commuters who work in Charlottesville, all travel through this town. Homeownership within the town limits will very likely increase the foot traffic into the village area, which is a win for our small businesses, many of which we've seen coming though during our fifteen years living at our Scottsville address. In order to be a sustainable community, we need to invest in modern local housing options. I am in support of thirty-six houses on Bird Street and encourage you all to vote in favor of the special needs permit that is being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, building.
Well, I wouldn't speak too much on the development. I've already mentioned it. I do feel like the people I've talked to don't come to these meetings, they feel it's too, too many and they'd like to see fewer houses at a real neighborhood, not thirty-six, but I already addressed it. The main reason I came here is I, I, I don't know if any of you all saw this article yesterday that Daily Progress. And it says, "Talk of the town turns ugly" and it's really offensive. And I'm going to write them about this and, and I just feel like it's sensational that they, you know, I've been to all the meetings and I haven't seen any ugliness. So maybe somebody has and maybe I missed them, but I, I feel this article's sensational and unsubstantiated. They talk about threats and, and there's no facts or no sources and it's, it's hearsay to me. And maybe it did happen. Maybe there was somebody like, somebody mentioned a knuckleball did something. But if they did do it, I think they, they need to be called out and there needs to be a police report or why, what, explain why this person is, is being protected. I mean, there's this rumor going around that somebody got ran out of town because of this. I think that needs to be halted. I haven't seen that. All the people I've seen here are kind and respectful and I just think this is a poor, poor article. And I, I'm going to write, but I, I really think the town needs to have a response to this. This is really bad press for our town and there's no reason for this. I mean, if they, they want to do this, they need to, they need to do some fact checking and really lay out what, what, where they heard this from and what this is all about. I've heard this from other people before and I don't think it really happened. If it did, then let's figure it, get it on the table and, and deal with it. Thanks.
My name is Sarah Woods. I am a Scottsville hometown kid. I grew up on Blount Road and that's where I currently live. Um, from the beginning, I've been asking town council to make considerations based on their own supporting documents and that's what I'm going to do today. After talking with the Southern Environmental Law Center about this issue, that was their recommendation. And so today I'm going to start with the comprehensive plan, which in the comprehensive plan, under the future land development use, section six, it says the sixty-one acre site with varied terrain and an older building needs to have a master plan for progress to occur. So then I'll go to the West Area Plan, which states for Scottsville, P U D, or Planned Unit Development zoning could be a part of the solution. A Scottsville Planned Unit Development could be known as a SPUD and should be a priority for the town. Mr. Bullock, in the 2021 June meeting, you brought up a traffic study and the potential of the town council requesting a town, a traffic study with regards to approval to any special use permit. And it was something that was of a concern that when Mr. Wallace provided information, he said that the town would be entirely in their rights to request a, a traffic study. It was important enough for you to bring it up and that's why a lot of community members also brought it up because it was also important to them. The last traffic study was four years ago. And I bring these items up again to share the idea that we should wait for the studies that are already have, that have grants, that are items that people have requested and will help provide answers and build community support. Follow the spirit and the letter of the words that are in your supporting documents. It'll help answer the community's questions and create an overall sense of cohesiveness to the entire community. So I'm just asking that you really consider this planned unit development idea that came up, but not just for the smaller site, but the entire comprehensive plan for the entirety of the site that's similar to what your supporting documents state.
Anyone else? We have one on the roster. Okay, go right ahead. Mr. Rockford, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thomas Sunsworth, 275 Bird Street. I'll speak briefly to that tonight, just to say I am in favor of the development at the end of Bird Street. I think it's something that you should strongly consider as others have tonight for the future of the town. As someone with two small children here, I'm concerned by the trends that we've seen in population growth. And I'm concerned for our standing with our neighbors as a hub of investment for the larger community. I think we're all aware that Scottsville doesn't stand on its own two feet and I don't mean that in any derogatory way. I mean that we are stronger as a crossroads community that's built on a a spirit of cooperation and a spirit of investment with our neighbors who come here for goods and services. And I think as you go through your budget season right now, you need to be thinking hard about where the money is hidden around this community in the form of other people's investments. The town's budget, I expect, not counting the influx of federal money, will be somewhere in the order of three quarters of a million dollars. For reference, you could spend about half of that, probably a bit more, running the Scottsville Library for a year. A service that's provided at no cost to the town. You could ask your town administrator who has worked in a locality that runs its own water and sewer authority, how long he feels that our branch of the local water and sewer authority would be able to stand on its own two feet if it were only supported by local subscriptions. My guess is that it would not be for more than a year or two at most. Our parks facility, the tennis court rehabilitation that was done recently, probably would cost about a year of our town's budget to do. Let alone the maintenance that they provide to the, to the fields down there, to the playground. Piedmont Housing Alliance has an investment in apartments here to provide affordable income. One of the cruxes of the conversations that we've been having around this housing development, again, at no cost to the town. So the list goes on and on and on. And these are investments that people make in our community with the expectation that we are investing in our community as well, that we are willing, as was said before, to keep the water out and let people in. That's our basic due diligence and we've been pretty good at keeping the water out. But as has been laid out here, we've seen nothing but declining population numbers. And that's, that's not holding up our, the full end of our bargain. And I think it's starting to show. The senior center moved to Yancey. I would wonder about other services following suit as the county might find it better business for them to invest those things in a place that is wholly within their control. And if Scottsville's not going to have the benefit of a population center, there's really no reason for them to there's really no reason for them to continue putting those kinds of programming here. So think long and hard about the options that are in front of you tonight and about the options you still have in front of you moving forward. The site plan process is a long and extensive one. It can still be used to address a lot of the concerns that you're hearing. But you need to make a decision here that is true, excuse me, truly in the best interest of the future of our community. And I hope you do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others online or in the audience wish to speak?
Hello. My name is Deandra. I live on Ababana Spring. I'm so a part of, I guess, Greater Scottsville. And I wanted to speak today from a more personal standpoint. I think you guys have gotten a lot of data. But what I wanted to give is a, a real world viewpoint of what I think the birdhouses could be. I was a teacher at Monticello High School before I moved to Scottsville and after I moved to Scottsville. And there was a drastic change in how I was able to interact with my students once I was able to live where they were able to live. And I have wanted desperately to invite more people from that community here. But because of pricing and because of availability, and I think the general sense of welcomeness, it has been more difficult, I think, to invite more people to share a part of the neighborhood that I have called home. And this petition with my signature as well as forty others, I think are three. And so the welcome, welcoming nature of a neighborhood of single-family homes that would allow children and families and generations to grow, I think, has a value that I hope is not being underrepresented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close public forums. Have a couple of good things to do before we move on. And I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Grisfield to take this presentation. Because Mr. Jack Maxwell has been working hard and diligently to all the adverse weather conditions we've had over the last year. Can you see that our trails are open? And why don't you just step out there and present that to Jack? Also, let's know Jack if you don't miss the tree.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you, but I would like to address the people out here. Everybody knows that Jack had a big part for Scottsville. I have had a chance to know Jack since I was a soccer coach a long time ago. And one thing I will say, as I came back in January from being away and the snowstorm had been here, I was quite discouraged because I'd have a lot of tree damage at my own house, of which I'm still cleaning up. But Jack got after it, and actually, Jack inspired me and he inspired a number of other people. And because of Jack's efforts, a whole lot of the vanquished nature areas opened. So Jack, on behalf of the town of Scottsville, the mayor, the town council, we all want to say thank you to you and your team for what you did. You inspired our town to get out there and to volunteer. You represent what's best about Scottsville.
And we had a whole group on track. Every once, once a year, we have the opportunity to recognize some of our bits, businesses that have been around for a bit. And so we try to honor that a little specifically. I would just call him out. Does anybody know that particular business? So you're welcome to step forward. And the certificate form is, the project permits has been around with us for five years now. Wayne has been with us for ten years. Electronic billing service has been with us for ten years. Baker Plumbing has been with us for twenty years. Baytown and James is celebrating their first anniversary of this year. Paul is on the run. I'm forced over here. There he is. The Angels Outdoors is finishing up their first year of business. What one do you think they're finishing up their first year of business? We grow our workforce across the street. It's been with us for a year. All right, I'll see if that's a, these are certificates. Thanks to our business community for keeping that score.
And thanks to Baytown and James for a little bit of their awareness. The committee goes on.
So now we do a committee report, and I'll ask Vice Mayor, who's on our planning commission representative of council, to give a report if he has one.
Mr. Mayor, the planning commission met on the seventh. And when we met, we talked about special use permits at four seventy-four Valley Street and four ninety-six Valley Street. These are properties that will be proposed as Airbnbs, and we are going to have a public hearing on that next month. Correct, Matt? Is that right?
On the two Valley Streets?
Yes.
Planning Commission reported a recommendation to those, and they have their first reading on a different time.
Yeah, okay. So the other thing that we talked about was the Planned Unit Development and related to the factory and talked about the mixed use of the factory. One of the things about the tire plant is that when it was first built, it had very specific use. Flipping it forward to the modern era, when that building is reused, if you think of a building like the X Building or other places that are used, there's multiple uses of it. So we would have to have, for a simple way of saying it, a creative zoning plan. And so what we did as the planning commission, as we began a conversation about how the factory could be looked at, and that conversation will take place over several meetings, and then we will eventually report to council. The other thing that we did was, there's been an ongoing conversation that Council Payne referenced before in talking about what it is and what are the requirements if somebody works from home, whether they have that, if it's one person or whether they have a business. So we talked about that in terms of the planning commission. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bullock, architectural review board?
Yeah, two main items from our meeting this month. One, we certified our annual inventory, which we complete every year, which we walk the streets and assess the condition of properties in the historic overlay district based on our criteria, poor, fair, good, and excellent. This year, eleven properties were rated four, which means there's a structural issue with the building or it is unsealed. Each of those property owners will be receiving a notice from us soon, in which they are required to meet with the ARB within ninety days to come up with a plan to address the issue within the year. And we're looking for progress towards improving our buildings. The other thing that we spent most of our time working with was the Tiger Fuel Site Plan. Tiger Fuel's location for their planned gas station across from the food line is in our entrance corridor, which is under the purview of the ARB. And so we began a conversation with Tiger Fuel about the trees at that entrance corridor, which the town is interested in preserving and integrating into their site to the greatest degree possible. No site plan has been approved yet. We'll be reconvening with them in April to further discuss the site. Our vice chair, Aaron Root, who's also a landscape architect, which we're lucky to have, along with representative from Bartlett Tree Service and Tiger Fuel, all met on the site last week to watch the site, number one, to assess the trees themselves, to figure out which ones are mature and healthy and which ones we can keep. And Tiger Fuel has been amenable to thinking a little more creatively about the design of their site plan, which I've been encouraged by, so that we can keep as many of the trees as possible. There are two standard trees. Interestingly, there's a driveway that runs parallel to twenty. The trees that are on the valley side or the twenty side or valley side of that driveway will likely not be impacted by the site plan. The ones on the other side of that driveway are the ones that we are being much more intentional about preserving and talking with Tiger about. So we're moving forward with negotiating the site plan. But I think we have some shared common ground in preserving as much of that as we can within their own commercial site plan.
Any questions for Mr. Bullock? Mr. Payne, anything from government services?
We started off with the usual roundtable discussion and action about the topics that we look at, too. We look at it from a cost, what's the goal of the cost? How can we take it? And finally, Sarah was opposed budget, and that's that. We'll have a presentation on that sometime. But just concerned that we want to take the grant money that has been given or granted to us and just want to make sure that we don't invest in something that we have to maintain in the space. So we want to be, and we want to be fruitful, too. So most of the meeting was about closed budget and all of that, Matt, at the end, and then say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Ms. Hines, Mr. Payne said, anything on events coming up?
Our last meeting was, the vast majority of the meeting was the Battle Festival. It looks like this year, we're going to try and go back to what we've done years in the past, where the vendors and music are going to be kind of gearing up more towards Canalways and Square and having more kids' center stuff down at the, down at the boat lesson, well, not a boat, but a really interactive property right there where last year, all of the vendors and everybody was. Try to kind of make it old timey for the kids, have sack races and formal and cool contests and stuff like that. And when the music and vendors kind of move over to, probably.
Do we have a date on that yet?
We do have a date on it. I did not think I did.
Sometime middle of June, right?
It is a Wednesday in June. It's the Wednesday before Colonnade Festival, if that helps you at all.
I just happen to have a calendar here. Yeah, June the fifteenth.
I'd like to confirm that with the people on the batees.
Okay, so it'll probably be June the fifteenth, but not, what's the further information?
Further information, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's not the fifteenth, it's the twenty-second.
We already have some businesses committed to putting up tents and Virginia Eagle is potentially going to sponsor your event. All right. In some manner, I'm not sure, maybe signage for parking and stuff like that. So that's a good stuff.
That's good. Is the Events Committee working with Scan on anything for Earth Day in April?
I have not.
That was Saturday and twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, check with Aaron, see if there's anything the Events Committee needs to do on that. That'd be great. Thank you all for that report. Anybody have any questions for anybody on their reports? Okay, well, since we made the switch in our agenda, our next item of discussion is special use permit for Bird Street. So let's start off with staff comments, and then if the developers here representative, we can just move on and go right ahead. We'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Matt. I don't have any new information to share in particular. Happy to answer any questions in council discussion or respond to anything from the public as you see fit. You do have your applicants and investors here. If there's anything that they can help with. I know it's a difficult and important decision, and I'm staff ready to help over the pack.
Matt, if you don't mind, Mr. Smith, I asked, Matt, so Matt, you feel in terms of the inclusions and the work that you've done, what is the current proposal you have thought it's a sound proposal? Whether it's, in other words, the conditions are normal conditions, so to speak?
Yeah, yes, sir. It has the concurrence of our town attorney, staff review from our friends at VDOT, the Admiral County Stormwater Office, the utility authorities, running water and sewer lines in the area, all concur that the site plan is basically in shape with what they typically work with, and this is a professional package. The party decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the representative of ship or and or Southern Homes would like to speak, welcome, come forward.
Evening, town council. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a cleaner with ship engineering. I'll introduce these two gentlemen who are here with me in just a second, but I wanted to just recap. I don't have anything new to add this evening. I think this project has been well evaluated over the past seven months. And I really want to commend the town for their involvement and their community engagement that you all undertook. We've been involved or invited to five work sessions. I think there might have been one or two more. Three community meeting sessions, three planning commission regular meetings. And this is our second town council, planning, or town council meeting. So I just wanted to commend you all for your community engagement, public involvement. And I think tonight, we stand before you with a condition set that has been well betted. There's a lot of merits to this project, and I think these conditions adequately address the impacts affiliated with it. And also here with me tonight is, we have now one builder involved and interested. And so it's Southern Development Homes, and Key Point Cert, and they are available for any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Anyone in town, or council, wish to pose any questions to Southern Homes first?
I do. I would, I'd be interested in, when you see the site plan and you look at it, how would you, as Southern Homes, what interests you in it? What draws you to Scottsville? How do you see the viability of the project? Just some general thoughts that you have as a company.
Well, sure. I'm Frank Bowles. I'm the president and founder of Southern Golden Homes. We've been building and developing in Charlottesville Admiral Gray area since nineteen ninety-nine. I've actually known Dr. Hertz since nineteen ninety-seven when I was a student at UBI. So we've found a lot of projects in and around this area. I think a lot of what we've done is urban intel, specifically in the city of Charlottesville. And once we got involved, I think this last iteration of the site plan was done with our products. So y'all have seen pictures of houses that we build in the city and then I'm around counting. And it was a really great fit. We like urban housing, like walkable housing. And we have an entire set of plans that are designed around that. And I think Kelsey did a great job of reconfiguring this layout to exactly fit our product.
And just, just a question, too, about Scottsville itself. So as I know you've done work in Charlottesville, so this would be a new venture for you here in Scottsville. How does that fit into your work model, your business model? How do you see Scottsville?
But we're around Admiral County base, so we're not that far. So in that regard, I think Scottsville's a really cool town, and there's certainly available land that spits out very well. And what we hope is an opportunity to provide some reasonable price housing, which is not always easy to do in our area. Yeah, there's some of the, look at our website, some of those plants. But we do like urban, single-family detached walkable house, and we've done a lot of that. And so it's a really great site and a really cool place. And I would say that picture behind you says it all. It's a beautiful place. And obviously, I think that would agree to have the info. Have you all just?
Have you all defined urban housing?
To me, there's smaller lots, walkable, closer together with walkable amenities as opposed to a more suburban where, you know, you're always driving everywhere you have to go. We parked on Bird Street and walked down here tonight.
Do you have a tangible commitment to this development yet?
We do, as much as that it gets approved, yes. We have a written contract, which we redacted some of the key financial parts and sense of.
We have a written contract which we redacted some of the key financial parts and sense of, I think it's somebody's request, but. Yes, I have a very long relationship with Dr. Hertz. I've looked at his property a number of times over the years, but our discussions got a lot more serious and. Anyway, we invested our time and energy into laying that out with our products. Yes, we have a very tangible commitment.
We're, just to say this to you, I've heard good things about your company and it comes highly recommended. I also will say that the interest that you have at Scottsville, I always perk up as seeing how people understand our town. And there's been, obviously you follow that there's been different opinions about how this process has gone. And we as a council are committed to whether this passes or fails, we're committed to addressing those concerns in the process. And one of the things we would want to do and dialogue with you in the long run is to do the best we could to see that the houses that are built, if they're built. Are in accordance with things that would be in keeping with the nature of our town.
Yeah, hundred percent.
There are a couple of people who have asked me. About cluster developments and whether or not this actually is, do you know anything about what a cluster development actually is? And whether or not this actually fits the definition of a cluster?
So typically in ordinances, Kelsey's really sharp on this. In a cluster, you have in a right cluster regulation, you have a set acreage percentage of say a ten acre site. Seventy-five percent of the site has to remain open space, the other portion is the developable side site. So what we see, a very great interest is, speaking of the infill, is having the ability to walk through these fine businesses and establishments that are here. And having the ability to add additional rooftops to help support these businesses in the future moving forward. And I think I personally recall this more in infill than more so than a cluster. Because it would be on a larger tract of land. I think Savannah has a cluster, our Eldmore has a rural cluster, I think as well. So we see it more as an infill.
Yeah, and I would say in those other ordinances, it's typically, it's called a rural cluster. I think it's just a terminology in Scottsville. It's a cluster, but.
Yes, if I may, in our law, cluster is the word that we use to indicate this shared open space here. The alternative would be for there to be no shared open space and all of the projects like we've taken up by these lots. So you know, one lot might have the entire waterfront and all the other lots be a little bit bigger. Cluster is the legal word that we use for the way that the lots are a little bit smaller, but then they share more open space. Legally, this is a cluster for us. So I can see that there's more info because of the overall small size of it, right?
Other questions?
Yeah. I was given this as some of the houses that you offer. So would these be the kinds of houses that you would be offering to build up on the lots?
Yes, yes, that is. So we have a product line. And the width, the frontage width of that home is thirty foot. And so that's what we have done in many of our more tight, smaller lot developments. And then obviously we have larger single family homes, but that product line is our thirty foot, which is a good size for a smaller lot that still allows parking on the lot as well.
So the point that I wanted to make here was that we are not going to get cookie cutter, croze style townhouses. We're going to get houses that are different and some of them are like Scottsville, but you know, they always have it. So if we could pass this around to so people could see what we're not doing, and we won't know what exactly ones you're going to go there. It's people who buy the lots, get the people from the house like that. So, but we do have a condition that we can't have a couple of them. Any two there next to each other. So the doctor, they could have a difference. The second thing I'd like to see, could you just quickly, very quickly, go through this checklist and tell us how you're going to implement? Yeah, just in a couple of sentences.
We can answer them. I mean, concept match on the site plan, so. Yeah, general conformity of the site plan. So when we move forward, if this moves forward. Our overall layout would be in general conformance with the plan, obviously.
And the plan that you're talking about is this plan here. So as you can see, there's a lot of open space in the center that we are. Trails to go through that. We have a lot. So that we gave a decision to strike the parks, condition of, of park ownership requirements for that reason. But this is what it's going to look like. See there are spaces between houses, so there are no townhouses.
Yes, sure. So I'm going through these and I'll keep in rank way as well. So for the lower density, the ordinance permits up to four DUA, and so that is down to three DUA. Ordinance per acre. So that's, you know, that's a condition we have to hear that cannot get a subdivision plot approved. That shows more lots than what's conditioned here. The mix of types, that's.
The condition is lots, different elevations adjacent to one another. Understood?
More space on the side. That was a condition that came about after a really robust conversation just about existing town character. And lot development within the town Scottsville, the ordinance permits a minimum of eight foot side setbacks. And we, that was buried to have a minimum of combined total of side setbacks of twenty-four feet. So that one side could be sixteen, one side could be no less than eight.
The one reason we thought that was important was we didn't want to have the vehicles parked in front of the home. We wanted the front of the house to be the feature and then the vehicles to the side. So there was more of a street presence.
Yeah, I don't know, more front yard, which is great.
I didn't bring my readers, sorry, that's why.
So the next one, trails. So the trails will be constructed as part of the site plan. However, there will be a public access easement and maintenance turned over to the town just for the width of the trail itself. Big porch facades, again, that was after this kind of the same conversation about the existing context of the town and the existing development that exists. But this front porch culture is important in Scottsville and you know, being able to see having that street interaction that happens when you have front porch on the street. We heard that was critically important. That's a condition in here to ensure that the project develops in accordance with those architectural guidelines. Facade variety, so just making sure that we're avoiding monotony and that we're getting a mixture and variety. And so just as kind of the town has built up over time and different, you know, housing units have come to play. We're definitely going to see a variety here as well. Biodiversity, that is a commitment to just natural native plantings in the area. We know it's important to the town, dark sky. Just a more common ordinance in other localities. And so here, it's just since there's not a protection in your ordinance, we're making sure that there's a protection in the conditions here.
So what we also do with that is our lighting is under the three thousand rooms. And for each house would have a street post up front, their photocell, so it automatically will turn on. So usually we try to place that so it's adjacent or near the sidewalk to allow lighted area in the evening. And those are on photocell. And again, they're below the three thousand, so it's probably dark sky when it's.
And then sidewalks, this is one of the first conditions that came up was just evaluating the feasibility and providing the town with an engineered plan for a sidewalk improvement along Bird Street. It is within walkable context, however, I understand there's not a sidewalk existing there. And it is difficult just given the kind of the age of the infrastructure and knowing exactly what the widths of the right of way are to commit to building a sidewalk. When there needs to be a full study done to understand if any land acquisitions need to come into play to construct that sidewalk in the future. Correct. That's a condition of final site plan approval. That study must be evaluated. And then environmental studies is the last one for a phase two environmental, which I imagine anything would require.
So just for the public, you know, what that means, you said, if a more rigorous environmental investigation of the site has to be completed. Before a bank will lend money for anything else. So if there is a pot of waste stuff up there, we'll come out there and we'll vote. So, and they're going to pay for it and towns not.
Oh, we're not lose any native trees. Most of the plant have a lot of trees on it. And number two, will these be tour trees planted the same feet tall?
So this street tree requirement, I believe the minimum planting diameter is two and a half, which puts it around eight to ten feet, I believe, in height. There will be some existing tree loss, yes, correct, right up in that area, Matt. And then obviously some of the frontage, depending on the improvement to make the entrance connection into the site. There will be a grade change cut to lay that bank back to, VDOT has a standard, minimum standard of ten percent roads. So obviously we can't exceed that without. So there are some challenges getting in, but once you get into the site, it plays out pretty well, actually.
And a condition on the permit is that the plantings aren't native species?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so I think we follow the typical, Alamo County has a certain list that is acceptable. Yeah. That's fine with us.
Thank you. That was, I would just say that was really helpful. Stuart, thank you for your bringing that focus to not only the public, but it's helpful for council to hear also.
Other questions for your engineer or the developer?
I should want to come up on one line and just maybe repeatedly, can we say anything about affordability and pricing on these? We had, we had interest from Habitat Committee in the past and the home values in town very widely. It's certainly been a concern for council community. How does the economics of this layout?
It's very hard to get specific on price ranges when there's no site plan. And as y'all can imagine, as a home builder today with lumber costs and supply chain issues, everything's all over. But I think one of the ways you're trying to at least address the, to have more of a variance for those couple of duplexes that were mixed in. Which would certainly be at a lower price point than the singles.
I think your website has prices in three hundred thousand dollars.
Don't think we are selling anything about price currently. We were before lumber, two years ago, yeah. Just to put it in perspective, I mean, the cost of lumber for us used to be pretty static quarterly and it's very erratic monthly. So our current pricing doesn't last very long and it moves a lot. Hopefully, things will settle down. Now, expectation is in a couple of years, things will hopefully cruise a little bit back towards normal, but right now it's probably the most volatile time we've seen. So how much would you say from three hundred fifty? Well, I, I don't know what was that three hundred and fifty. That may have been a townhouse in Alamo County. We built homes in Savannah County and Upper Two's just a couple of years ago. So it just all depends.
So lumber went up on us.
Lumber forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand for twenty-six hundred square foot house? Just lumber alone. That's not granite, drywall, everything else, just the frame structure.
That's clearly not sustainable, but from the last initial pandemic shutdown shock and just as things were starting to normalize, Russia invaded Ukraine. But I think in the scheme of looking forward two years, I think the expectation that things are much more stable. We hope. Yeah, so you understand.
So I have a question if, if this were to be approved this evening. When would you think the first construction would start?
I think we have to answer the question this way. If it were approved this evening, we would start immediately on the site plan and the conditions that were needed diligently. And once that's approved, which I don't know what your timeframe for that is, but in Alamo County, it's very wide and varied and very long. But by the time that's approved, we would be ready to move forward, putting in the infrastructure and then obviously after base statement, building houses.
It would probably be at least a year.
I would assume so. We have not been able, I don't think I've seen a site plan in Alamo County get approved in less than a year.
Yeah.
So I.
If the Tiger Fuels project is any indication, it took a year between council's approval of a special use permit to receive delivery of the site plan. For the design work to be done and planning commission and ARB are two months into it so far and have a couple more months of work to do for sure. This is a more complicated site.
But I would commit, we would be diligently pursuing it for our own interest and as much as yours. We've already asked Jim's team for a proposal on an alt survey to pick up all physical features. So if things go in the right direction, they have marching orders already.
Okay.
Jump on.
Thank you. Any other questions? We thank all three of you for taking the opportunity to speak to us this evening.
Thank you.
No, sir. Public forum's over. Okay, then I guess we are in a position to ask for a motion of some type.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve this resolution that has just been reviewed.
Is there a second? Now we have council discussion.
And this is going to sound like I'm reading it because I am. The power that some small cities and towns are prospering. While many others are suffering the loss of identity. While some communities able to maintain their historical character and hold their light in the face of a rapidly changing world. While us have lost the very features that once gave them distinction and appeal. How does small communities grow without losing their heart and soul? Many communities found ways to retain its all town values, historical character, sense of beauty and sense of community. As a state across the economy, they've done it without accepting the kind of cookie cutter development that is termed many communities. In faces places that tourists avoid, which no longer, there's still a sense of pride and resonance. Every successful community has its own strengths and weaknesses, but the offshells are fundamental characteristics. It's clear that successful communities involve a broad cross section of residents in determining and planning for the future. They also capitalize on their distinctive assets, their architecture, history, natural surroundings and homegrown businesses. Rather than trying to adopt a new and different identity. Twenty-first century development focuses on what a community has rather than what it doesn't have. Another mistake is thinking that development is all about the one big thing. Small American communities are littered with projects that were sold as a type of silver bullet solution. Successful development is. Successful development is rarely about the one big thing. All development is not created equal. Some development projects will work, we have a better place to live and work. Other projects will evolve. The biggest impediment to better development in many small towns is a fear of saying no to anything. Communities that will not say no to bad development will get the worst of everything. If you say no to bad development, they will get better development in the first. Some local officials now, people do have to afford new developments and worse yet, they will accept the first offer that comes down the pipe. Even if the proposed project is the odds with communities' values and vision for the future. And some are afraid to place demands on developers, but few of the developers will just walk away. Consider a tourist, for example, the more Scottsville comes to look like just every other community, the less reason there is to visit. On the other hand, the more Scottsville does protect and enhance its unique character, both natural and architectural, the more people want to visit. This is because tourism is about visiting places that are different, unusual, or unique. If every place you like every place else, that'd be no reason to go anywhere. Differentiation is imperative. So finally, successful, successful communities have good views and concern and committed citizens. Sometimes people who are longtime residents, upset to have room to change what they love about their hometown. Other times, it might be newcomers who want to make sure that their adopted hometown doesn't develop the same occurrences and problems as the towns and the cities they live in. The more often than not, they're simply citizens who care a great deal about it there. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Any other comments from the council members?
I would like to make a comment and I would like to say, first of all, to those of you out there in the community that are concerned about growth in Scottsville. Concerned about how this might affect, you might affect the future of Scottsville. We, as a town council, have attempted to hear your concerns. We may agree or disagree with your thoughts. But we have wanted to hear what you've had to say and this is simply one step of the process. We don't know yet whether these houses will be, will get through tonight. So the first thing I want to say to those of you, it's been a no brainer. And if anybody, if you have followed this, I've been in favor of it all along. The reason I've been in favor of it has to do with some pictures here. These are my kids. These kids are not different than some of your other kids, but I appreciated what Deandra said. Did I get your name right, Deandra? Deandra, sorry about that. I appreciated what she said because when we moved here in the year 2000, these, these kids, my kids, my six kids and the one we adopted too. My youngest son, they grew up in Scottsville. I got to know, actually I knew Alex, I knew Jack, knew lots of them as little ones who grew up in this community. I feel like in this conversation, we lost sight of them. We, we are making a decision based on traffic, based on house, that housing density. But, and, and I appreciated what you said there. Fellow town councillor, I felt like what you shared was, was very heartfelt and I, you, this, this town is, you have much more years than I do. But from my perspective, I'm trying to speak for them and I want to speak for them because I think as they got their first jobs here, as they were involved in the community here, we want to create an inclusive inviting Scottsville. I had the opportunity not that long ago to be at a neighborhood very similar to what this might be. Full of young vibrant families, full of little ones around, people that are there having a chance to live. And I thought, why would people in Scottsville not want to have that? Why would that not be in keeping with our small town nature as Council Payne just talked about? As I understand this issue, this development actually is the embodiment of what Scottsville is. It's the best of Scottsville. And not only is it the best of Scottsville from the past, but it has a chance to help Scottsville be in the right position to the future. And that's really where, from my perspective, and I appreciate the developers here and I want to specifically look to my town councillor friend Munson there. Who helped us really do some serious work here to present a plan and do research that really is forward thinking, that really is future thinking. That is one that is about where Scottsville can be as we work together and create an inviting community. And we think beyond our own convenience and we choose to live in such a way where we think about the future. So for my part, I've said it all along and I will say it again, the reason I'm in favor of it has little to do with me. I don't really care about me as a 58 year old guy, but I think about them. I think about the Scottsville they grew up in and I want to see a Scottsville that's inviting to future generations of young people and future generations of little ones. And allows teachers to live in a community with those that they serve and allows families to interact and allows people of all ages to interact together. So that we can work beyond our differences and be an amazing welcoming community to take the best traditions of this town and project them forward. So I highly recommend that we approve this and I'm honored to be a part of this group of six on the council and our mayor.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I'd like to compliment our planning commission and this body itself for its due diligence over the last five months, six months now. That has gotten us to this place with this permit and feedback from the community. I think you have been heard. This permit is balancing density that fits in with our small town character. We are a small town, right? There is density here. Every empty lot in this town needs to have a building on it. It used to be a lot more dense, used to be more people down there. And this plan, I appreciate you using the word infill, is doing just that, which is filling in another pocket of this little town. Which Mr. Munson used to always remind us, used to be the largest inland port in America. And so, no joke, 70 wagon, 70 mountain wagons a day used to roll through this town in the 1840s. Well, then something to see. And when Kelly and I moved here, the historic character of this town is what brought us here. The walkability of this town. I appreciate that we have a developer who's able to articulate the importance of walkability in design. Driveways off to the side, I don't want to see your car, I want to see the side of your home. That's what makes this town great to be in and to walk around it. And being a historic town, things have been built up over the last two to 300 years, you know? These homes all come from different eras. And so sitting on the ARB, that's one of the cool things about historic districts. Each home has its own character and these homes are a new patch in the quilt of that historic character, the history that's to come. So I appreciate that. And in terms of traffic, because I am concerned about traffic, I'm pleased by the work that, again, our commission and this body has done to get reports about the condition of traffic. We know 300, well, they have 10 cars per home, 360 cars a day. I've talked to a lot of people that live in town. Nobody's making 10 trips a day out of their, out of their homes. They live in town. I make two and I work in Charlottesville. So I hear the concern about traffic because I, I sit on this body, we talk about the road, we talk about sidewalks. And what we know from talking to VDOT is that this number of cars does not trip the concern about traffic. So my concerns related to those things have been assuaged by the diligence that this body has done. And I think we're sitting right now on a great addition to this town with exceptional conditions. And I'm very grateful that the developers were here, the villagers were here to articulate how you plan to meet those conditions. So thank you.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that I moved here about 10 years ago and was on the planning commission when I moved here. And seeing, and, and recently, during the course of that time, I had seen at least three or four proposals from the current owner of this, of, of the, the, the Bird Street property. For developments on this property and every single one of them was turned down in barrier of debate because it wasn't what we want. It was too, they were too dense, they were too poorly thought out, they weren't really thought out at all. So I want to, I want to thank everybody out there who has talked to me about what they would like to have. Help here. If they would like whatever, you know, we've held public planning meetings. I've talked in great detail with a couple of people. Ms. Wood, Ms. Croze, Mr. Hyson in particular, and they brought up a lot of really good points and they have changed my thinking about this as, as we've gone along. And maybe these questions, I think they're looking at some things a lot more, you know, a lot more detailed. And, and so throughout that process, we came up with, through public comment, we came up with this list of things that we wanted to have. And, you know, as we, as I asked the developer, they explained how they would get, give us these things. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do about affordability. That was one of my, one of the things that I really wanted to see out there. I think it's, it's really important to people who work here in Scottville or in the village. But given the, the economics of, of that site. I think the only real way that we could get affordable, truly affordable housing up there or entry level housing. Is if the town bought land and sold somebody like that to humanity and they built houses up there. We are not unfortunately in a position to be able to do that as a town. We're not even in a, but might have to position to be able to get the engineer and then they got the sidewalks up there without the help of the developer. So there are a lot of limitations to what we can do as a town. And I think what we're getting here is a very well thought out compromise. Thirty six, we started out with 40, 48 houses, we're down to 36. There's a, there's a spectrum that we're looking at where buy rate, I think there's 12 houses up there. If you build 12 houses, they're going to be extremely expensive. We could put a skyscraper up there and the, the units would be extremely, would be relatively less expensive. Somewhere, we're somewhere along that spectrum and I've had a lot of discussion about what that density should be on here. And I think this is a good compromise. I don't think that anyone is going to get everything they want here. I'm not getting everything that I want. But I think it's the best thing for the town. We've all agreed that we need to have some growth here. If we're going to be able to mulch, mulch the parks and maintain the police. And, and we are struggling now to find a way to balance our budget with, with, within the, the taxes that we receive. And it's hard. And if anyone has any, would like to have some input on that, I would encourage you to come to the next couple of council meetings and give us some ideas because it's tough. So I think the town needs to grow. We've been much bigger, we've been shrinking and, and I think we do need to grow. I think this also maintains the character of our town. You will not be able to see these, these houses as you walk down Valley Street. Most of the people who live here are going to walk down to Valley Street to patronize our businesses. And all of the businesses that I've talked to here in town, they're all makers who want to work here. So is this perfect plan? Could we spend another 10 years coming up with a proposal, a perfect one? Maybe. I think there's always going to be things that we can't foresee, but I think that we have thought this through to the best of our ability. And at some point, we need to move forward and this to me feels like a plan that has received a lot of input, it's, it makes reasonable compromises and I think it's going to be good for, for the town. And while maintaining my character of this, so again, thank you to everyone who's talking. I really appreciate your time and I will.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Meredith, if you haven't said anything, anything, Alex, anything y'all want to say? Last chance. If there are no more comments from the council members, then I'll ask the clerk to call the votes.
Alex Besson?
No.
Stephanie Bowles?
Yes.
Dana Briscoe?
Yes.
Meredith Pines?
Yeah.
Stuart Munson?
Yes.
Anything?
No.
Well, let me say this. I want to thank too all the people that have shown up for all these meetings and all the input they have given us. And I came here 15 years ago, so everybody seems to be giving a chronology of their time in Scottsville to purchase the funeral home. And when the deal fell apart after six months, I could have left, but I stayed because it's such a great little place. My wife and I had a discussion today, I don't know if anybody's ever read the book, Who Moved My Cheese? But I do not like change. And we talked about me not liking change, but this is the change we need. I have never really liked the term for the greater good, but this is for the greater good. This is for the town and the future of the town. And I think we will be making the right decision to have those homes up there. So my vote is to approve the SUP.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. And again, thank all the public for coming and, and you're welcome to stay around. We have a public hearing on a gas station on Main Street. And we have a first reading of a request for travel lodging on Valley Street.
The applicant at 474 and 496 Valley Street is here with us online. It's far maler. Planning Commission, they hold their public hearing and report out a favorable recommendation on that item with no additional requests to establish transitive liability lines at those legal issues on the right and third side of the project. And, and thank you everyone.
Is, um, so is this being presented and voted on today or on April 18th?
I beg your pardon. This is your, this is your first reading. Planning Commission reported out, town council needs to do its same public hearing. So you can just introduce the project briefly, but the action for tonight is almost just all the public hearing.
Okay. I didn't actually realize that. So yeah, basically we are seeking to renovate 474 and 496 Valley Street. They are currently in a state of extreme disrepair and I think we feel like the highest and best use for those buildings would be Airbnb or tourist lodging basically because that would, you know, there's already a glut of vacant commercial space in town. So it wouldn't be creating vacant commercial space and instead it would be creating patrons of businesses in town. And just as another layer of interest for the, the Airbnbs, you know, I'm, I'm an architect and a designer and I had a thriving practice in DC before we moved out here. And so the idea is kind of to, everything within the Airbnbs would also be for sale. So they're kind of doubling as a boutique furniture store, art gallery. But I, I think that there really isn't the foot traffic to support that use alone. And so by kind of doubling the uses, we will hopefully, you know, bring some, some interesting, some interest to town. And also be providing customers to the other businesses in town by bringing in more people. So that's the general gist of. So that's the general gist of of things.
Yeah, thank you for explaining the business model too. That that helps me and us in our in our consideration, so thank you for that. One thing you might, one thing, oh sorry. One comment I I will make just to you would be, mention a little bit about the uniqueness of the one structure. I think that's interesting.
Oh sure, I actually have a whole presentation. I'm sorry, being new to town, I actually didn't realize that that um that today was the the day to present. I don't know, Matt, if you have, I could share my screen or, but um.
I I have it, just a moment, sir.
Okay. Yeah, but I think that, you know, a small town like this really probably can't, it's probably not financially viable to do the type of renovation the building deserves and have it be, you know, just a furniture, you know, slash art gallery. I don't think that, I don't think that that would be a successful business. And I really think that the town needs more businesses that are thriving, not just kind of barely clinging on. And so I think that, so here, this is the building, this is four seventy-four. And um and so, you know, the exterior concept is really just to properly, I'm an architect and I, for years and years and years and years, worked in all of Washington DC's historic districts like Georgetown, Capitol Hill, Woodley Park. Um and so I'm really familiar with what the the standards are for a proper renovation. And the goal with with the facade is it's a, it's a beautiful building. It just really needs love and attention. So um so the idea with the facade is really to replace the awnings with some nice crisp, proper, properly constructed awnings and restore the windows, you know, properly repair the mortar. And then, I'm sorry, if you could go up one. Then, so then on the interior, what we're looking at doing are really polished, really well done suites that would, you know, the building was a hotel at one point. And I think that it would kind of have a boutique hotel feeling, more so than just like an apartment that's getting rented out. And so each each unit will actually have its own intense color palette and then we'll have accessories and art and furnishings that will go along with that, that will kind of nod at Scottsville's history also. And those items will be for sale to the people who are staying there, you know, tourists or or whomever, but also by appointment to local designers and, you know, people who are interested. So um, if you want to scroll down one more. And so then behind, this is the tiny little building that's a, really a little hidden gem that I think has been forgotten maybe a little bit. Um this is the switching station that's behind the current beekeeping store. And the idea with this is once again to properly restore the facade and make this an individual little tourist lodging that would be, you know, called the switching station and where the same concept, but where the art and furnishings and the items within the structure reflect the historic past of the the building's life previously. So and and the roses are, I would just like to grow climbing roses up the side and 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 garden the front so that when you're walking down Alley Street, you, you know, when you look to your right, you see something that's very compelling and and interesting and not, not just kind of a decrepit um alley.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it can, I think a lot of these little historic towns, you know, you, sometimes will have really charming alley scapes also. I don't think the street scape is the only thing that's important.
Thank you, Ricky D.
Any further questions?
No. So so we're just making the motion to call the public hearing.
Motion to have a public hearing on this on April eighteenth?
Second.
Or any more power of discussion?
I just really, it just means so much to have such a specifically drawn out plan presented along with a special use permit of really any kind, whether it's coming for us or the planning commissioner, the A R V. So just want to sincerely thank you for that.
Thank you, I I appreciate that. One thing I I would like to note is that we haven't closed on the building yet and we were waiting to close until this process concluded. So I'm hoping that um on April eighteenth, there, you would typically vote on this?
Okay.
Because I'm not sure we could get another extension, I guess.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, okay, perfect, great.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded for a public hearing on this matter on April eighteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have a public hearing on special use permit for a gas station in the historic district that's within walking distance of Zach's house.
I beg your pardon now, I had this mixed up and out of order on my end. The other is three eighty-five East Bank Street. The gas station formerly run as a GoCo. That property likewise is under contract to a new investor. Harry Montague is the applicant with GoCo. Jay Fang is the um new investor who has worked in local businesses and real estate here in town before and proposes to purchase and reopen this building. He does not have the same kind of imagery that the spirit does, not being a practicing architect, but he discussed that he has run convenience stores and businesses like this before. And he described to the planning commission, running it much as it was before. There are no major equipment upgrades. The the restaurants and the convenience store are buy right there, but because of its historic location, the gas station use requires a special use permit. Those auto oriented heavier traffic kind of uses are more sensitive in historic issues. That's why the special use permit is needed. Planning commission held their public hearing and reported out the recommendation to approve the qualifications.
So I will open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things to think about. Uh one, with the addition of Tiger Fuel. That would be the fourth gas station here in Scottsville. As someone who drives to Savannah County every single day, I don't know that they have four gas stations in the whole county because when I'm running them low, I can't find anything on the way to work. So that does seem somewhat excessive. Uh also, we already have two gas stations whose runoff goes directly into Main Creek, which then goes directly into the James. So if we are concerned about runoff that's going into the James, we may want to consider not adding more gas station runoff. Uh I'm not opposed to a convenience store and a restaurant at that location at all. I think it would be a a nice thing to again, bring more people in, but I would caution the addition of another gas station in town.
Thank you. Car.
I don't know, but gas is part of it.
You're just waiting for the fried chicken to come back.
Absolutely. They better have, go back the way they were. At one point, that was the best fried chicken in Scottsville. And it was delicious. So as long as they got that going, they will drop people, whether they sell them gas or not, they'll drop people.
Okay, so are you saying that you oppose it or are you?
In favor of.
You're in favor of it.
It sounds like you're more in favor of chicken.
Any others? Any other comments from the audience? I don't know who, you know, I don't even know what kind of gas GoCo was. It seemed like it was a different truck there every time I delivered, so.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I think it is coastal. Something to see anyways.
Excuse me, I believe it was Coastal Fuel that put that in.
Okay, alright. Any other members, yes ma'am, this car.
Well, I just wanted to say with the traffic going for the really random, another place where you can get a sandwich and chips and something on the go that you don't have to order ahead of time, like we used to have with Swiss Life. Go ahead and get a good sip.
The main, main purpose of this, he can do that anyway, the main purpose of this public hearing is to the gas pumps.
Thanks, Sarah, once again, um just historically, and if we were talking about using historical references for the town, Scottsville has had four gas stations historically. Uh Skippy's used to be a gas station for quite some time. When GoCo left, it did leave a little bit of a vacuum and more locations increased competition and lower prices. And I think we can all agree that after the gas runs that we saw just a year ago, having a little extra gas in town probably isn't a bad thing, especially if you can't get gas at Keen and you're on empty and the gas stations, all the other gas stations in in the local area are out. It it's always helpful to have backups.
Thank you. Mr. Car, what we used to have, what it used to be, four groceries here?
Yeah.
Four grocery stores?
Yeah.
What, how many gas stations, four gas stations?
I don't know, I don't know.
Five at one time, yeah.
This has been one or had been one, I know, where a research firm talked about working at a previous iteration at this location on two thousand seventeen, just to kind of give context.
Well, you know, the strange thing for me, and this is showing my age, they used to have price wars. And if you had service stations on opposite corners, if this guy lowered his penny, then this guy lowered his two cents. Now, if this guy raises his, this guy raises his, wants to see who can keep up with the other with the highest price. Doesn't make sense, but that's the way it goes. Any other comments from the audience? If not, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council.
I would like to make a recommendation that we pass this, that we allow the special use permit.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second now.
And now, is there any comments from council members?
Well, I want to, so now that I've said it, I think Ms. Cruz, Cruz, they had a good point is that we are concerned about runoff on the river. We are concerned about four gas stations, but at the same time, I, the economics of it, the owner knows what he's doing when he goes into it. The main reason I would be supportive of it is looking at it, it it's historically a gas station. I mean, that is what it, that's what it was. And if we restore a vacant property, we, so one of the things we have as a mantra in town, so to speak, is we say, let's restore buildings that are vacant. So we currently have a vacant building and it wants to be used. So it would seem to be almost hypocritical, I think, of us as a council to now come along and deny that because we are saying to our other businesses, please reopen or do something. So I would, I would echo Council Munson's words before. I don't know that I would like everything about it, so to speak, although the chicken sounds good. But I do think as it's a historically used place, given the option of a vacant building or a used building, I much prefer a used building and a businessman who's trying to find a way to use it. And it also means that somebody has to actively take care of it. So in other words, there's regulations that are going to have to be followed up. And I'm not saying they aren't when it's vacant, but it's much more active when it's being used. And that being said, given its proximity to the river, I hope the concerns that were mentioned before are addressed. And the other concern about, you know, how much we are paying at the pump right now is pretty obvious. So having another place, from my perspective, I think it's, I think restoring this this site, even though it's in the future, it wouldn't be cited there, it is there now. So I I'm in favor of it.
Any other comments from council?
I I support this as well too. I think Mr. Fang has started seven businesses in town and and I don't know, I'm not making any judgment on whether it's going to be successful or not, but I think he is, he is, what he's done so far has been really good for the town. And I echo Council Wipco's comment that this, you know, somebody needs to take care of this property. And having a tenant in there, is it able to do that? There are a lot of environmental regulations that are going to, you know, keep an eye on what goes down down the street there. And I think that's something that's going to be incumbent on us as a town to to make sure that we we do keep an eye. But I think that that we have a responsible and successful Scottsville entrepreneur who's interested in this, I think we should, and it's, it has a startup in the gas station. So it seems like it's makes sense to approve.
Any other comments?
I I am hesitant about the number of gas stations, mostly not, mostly because Tiger Fuel is going to be much larger. It's not going to be a small gas station like Lucky's or Eastman, it's going to be upwards of ten pumps, right? And so that's, so it's not just the number of gas stations, but pumps available. So that that's my biggest hesitancy about it. I think in the, you know, I know it has been historically used as a gas station, so that's fine. Um but we also know, I mean, even Tiger Fuel is trying to cut back their greenhouse emissions by forty percent in twenty years. So I don't know, E V stations, that would be cool, you know, so, you know? But um so I'm hesitant about the number of, just the number of pumps in town. That's that's my primary.
I'm not sure that that's what we're here to judge on. The viability of of the business that goes in there is really, is not really what's the question. Isn't it, isn't it in the interest of the town to allow gasoline pumps in there? And and I think it it is in the interest of town to do that. I don't know whether, I'm not making a call whether I think this is going to succeed or not, and that's kind of not my problem. But it is my problem to to try and maybe build and and offer somebody the opportunity to do something.
Other comments? Ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Alex Besson?
Yes.
Bullock?
No.
Briscoe?
Yes.
Pines?
Yeah.
Munson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item D, Mr. Wallace. Going on with the bike.
Thank you, Matt. We had a bit of work session discussion on this topic last week. I'll I'll repeat just a, just a bit of it here for public attention here now. The the town's budget calendar works on a twelve month cycle, the fiscal year that starts on July the first. So we have between the first introduction of a staff recommendation here now and the May or June meeting to adopt that balance budget. It has a couple of steps from the staff recommendation to the town council proposal, advertising and tax rates and spending categories, revision of that budget and final adoption. Then we take the end of the fiscal year to wrap up our bookkeeping and start a public management year. There is also a need for what we call a supplemental appropriation where the current adopted budget, we had unexpected revenues and unexpected costs and those categories don't quite match up. So truly not that supplemental for the year keeps us in line. On the whole, the current budget is performing well. Our budget has twelve department categories in it, farmers market, DMV, police. Three of those categories look like they're headed above their target. Things like construction costs to start the DMV cost more than you probably would. But the other nine are below the targets. So the supplemental as a whole does not increase the overall adopted budget, just shifting from nine smaller ones to three larger ones. The bigger concern in this budget recommendation is looking forward to spending in the future. And the conversation around the Bird Street project touched a little bit on this. The the problem that I need to share very candidly is the town's own core revenues. We had some discussion about the large infusions of federal funds to the American investment plan and the town's success in grant. But going back thirty years, the core of the town's revenues have been these taxes on our local businesses. My business license, meal tax, bank franchise tax and cigarettes. Those four make up the large majority of the town's own revenue in a typical year. Take a year like twenty eighteen, when there were not a lot of large grant projects going on, the town ran a budget of about six hundred thousand dollars. And these sources made up more than half of that. Our problem is that from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one, they barely increase. We had a peak at twenty nineteen, pandemic recession and only a very soft recovery. Meal tax has done a little bit better, bank franchise is down, cigarette is fairly steady, but trending in the wrong direction. These are not providing the structural growth to keep up with the increased costs of doing the basic services that we do. Retaining our staff with competitive and competitive. Um, retaining our staff with competitive benefits, increased operating costs on everything from software licenses to malt shank gasoline. Um, the trend line is not up and the trend line of our costs is up. Um, so the, the fundamental question, um, that council took on at the work session last week was, what do you want to do? Um, that we continue to strive on grant writing and have success with that to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars in the current year and expected that more of seven hundred thousand dollars in the next year. We cannot rely on that to pay this electric bill and to pay this quota. And that's what Government Services Committee is speaking to with, um, with predators, the quay things, the real world here helping with that. So the basic question for council and communities who review this budget and discuss tax rates is, do we feel like we're at a ceiling for services? Um, the amount in question is about sixty thousand dollars, continuing the kind of service levels that we have now, cost package. Moving our police department towards accreditation, improving the maintenance in our parks, retaining all of our staff. Uh, do we cut those service levels or do we look to new revenues? And we had discussion about continuing in this core package. You could increase some meal tax. Um, Adam Rock County is doing that. Charlottesville looked for authority permission to do it and didn't get it. Um, definitely dedicating a tax for school upgrades. We're fortunate, we don't have to pay the school upgrades. I don't know how county is doing that, that's their own source for that. We could increase these tax rates or we could look at a new one. The biggest source that we do not use is real estate tax. Most towns in Virginia do. Um, you typically pay ten cents, twenty cents, thirty cents of town real estate tax on top of your county real estate tax. Or this is like that, the Lisa is like that, Littleburg is like that, all the Shango Valley towns are like that. Do we want to be like that or do we want to continue to use these business-based revenue sources that we have? It affects how we do our work, it affects planning and progress. Um, it's an important conversation, no action is needed tonight. We just had the first reading on a draft budget. Um, the stat draft budget, my presentation to you of what does it cost for us to keep doing the things that we've already approved? There's a balanced budget here at one point two million dollars. Again, seven hundred thousand of that comes from other sources. Five hundred thousand of that is poured through other sources. That is not sustainable by reason.
I know you told us last one, right? Brian, sure, sorry, tell me again. Why gives the number of, you know, like, i- if he did do a property tax, you said the only way, it wouldn't be worth it at a certain number for the indication and all of that. What, what is the lowest, uh, property tax, how many basis? Ten cents?
Uh, I, in that neighborhood, um, so the tax rate is published as, um, pennies of tax per hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, so how moral is it eighty-four, uh, and a, and a decimal? Flavanna is at eighty-eight in decimal. The towns typically have ten, twenty cents on top of that. Below ten cents, the, the cost of assessing, billing, enforcing, it becomes a pretty leaky bucket. The town earns about eight thousand dollars per penny. The total value of all the tax of the properties in town is about eight million dollars. So we're working, divide that by a thousand, eight, eight thousand per, per penny. Ten cents, eighty thousand dollars.
Yep. Oh, community should mention that. They are people, town, and, and.
Yes. So sometimes you get two bills. Other times you get one bill and it's got two line items on it and the county shares. You pay one place and they send it back. We might end up with five, I haven't gotten into those county bills yet.
Yeah, I think, like we said at the work session, I, I'd like to see sort of a makeup of just the mix, you know? Cause I don't know what the answer is. Um, I, I'm not a big fan of instituting town property tax at this time. But if we're talking about sustainable revenue, it would be, it sounds like we may need something that is sustainable or consistently reliable as a base. But I think it would be helpful to see all those numbers of going into our next work session.
Yeah, I agree. If it has to be, God, if we decide, you know, if it's really the only feasible way of doing it, that's why I'd ask that, I feel like the lowest possible tax that would still be possible with great financial. Cause you did talk about a one and a half percent increase, the sales tax.
On, on meals, yes.
That could be a lot of things. Yeah, I feel like we could do the ten cents, but then only make it one percent, you know? Yeah, there's a few different ways of looking at it.
Yeah, is there, you have, and you need a crystal ball for this, obviously. Is there any thought of what sort of tax revenue we will, might be getting from the Tiger Fuel locations?
I think it would be one of our larger ones. Um, I, I'd certainly ask them, I don't know that they'll tell me what they expect this to gross. Um, but, um, I think you can see which restaurants in town are the biggest.
Yeah.
Uh, and turning over the most and having the most traffic. Um, you think this would do, you know, better than the existing places that do deli sandwiches and the soda businesses?
What, what, what taxes, what taxes apply that we get? Obviously the business people, of course, and the sales tax, obviously from the county.
That's right.
Is there a meals tax too?
Yes, and, and the, the meals tax would be the largest impact from that one probably.
Got it.
Um, that, um, the sandwich shop, we could, we would be one of them.
Something, maybe you could run it by those guys and just, uh, ask for a ballpark.
Give a multiple choice question?
Yeah.
Why are we expecting that one?
Okay, that, that, back to that question. In the next fiscal? Like, oh, in the next fiscal, oh, okay.
That they're, I would expect their grand opening and their first tax payments to be almost budget.
Oh, that kind of changes stuff.
I prefer, oh.
That would be fast.
Uh, no.
Well, cause they've still got, so the ARB and the planning commission still have to finalize their site plan. So, so I don't think that'll happen until May. Unless we got really expeditious at our April meeting somehow.
Then, then building permits.
Yeah.
Site work, construction, even if the parking three hundred lasts.
Yeah.
It's just a little while.
Yeah.
Any, uh, any other questions on the budget right now?
No.
Tell us about the resolution, Mr. Wallace. Uh, we hear all the news today that the, there's an uptick in England and we're usually three weeks behind that, so.
You mentioned that with the wall.
Yeah.
Well, no. Uh, we, we have the, we have the end of the local states of the HBC and expanding our fair communities. The CDC's map of COVID conditions, uh, puts us into low spread and concern, where we had been an medium and high just a few weeks ago. Uh, I, I defer very heavily to the, um, health department on these kinds of recommendations. It's not something that I knew anything about two years ago, I'm not learning much. Um, the way that Dr. Boss described it, marking two years of COVID and the health issue was, um, COVID is on the wane, but here it's dead and we're not going to overcome it. But we, what we need to learn to do now is live with it and go about our daily life in a way that is safe for all of our community members. And, and perhaps that is less of an emergency and more of an effective life. What emergency things were we doing two years ago that we don't need to do now? I remember at the beginning of pandemics invoking those emergency powers, going to the food line and saying, the next time that you get rubber gloves and sanitizer and bleach, you can't sell it to anyone else. You have to sell it to me and I'm giving it to our employees. That was the strictest use of our urgency powers that we ever invoked. Where the free market did not operate because we needed it. I did that once. We have not done anything like that recently. Um, so I saw in the ends of the states of emergency where appears that, oh, we can manage this as a normal fact of life and fact of government, working on our stronger public health system. And, um, with, um, regards to everybody who should continue to suffer coming and grieving for it, um, we need to move forward.
I appreciate you providing feedback for the health department. So that was gonna be my question, so, you know, rationale, how are we evaluating when to come in and out? I know we certainly have been meeting in person, you know, for the last, I don't know, four months, I don't know, all year, yes. Um, so appreciate that feedback.
So if we come out of this emergency, would that allow? I can't remember where that leaves us in terms of Zoom stuff, so people can still zoom in. We're gonna keep that.
That's right.
And we still have this, um, this, uh, ability as a, as a counselor, would it stay true if you're missed? Would we?
Yes, we, we go back to your, your normal absentee policies.
The two, I think you said.
Yes, where you, you've got a couple of excuse outlets to be meeting, but you need to be here to vote.
So.
This, this form of engagement, if it's helpful, can certainly continue. We've already renewed the Zoom license.
And it would also mean basically, we would say if anybody wanted to wear a mask, here would be optional.
Of course.
Right, yeah.
And there's only, um, two local counties in the county right now. Um, Shoreville's got, uh, on the road.
Yes, sir.
So, so Mr. Mayor, would you take, is it time to give a recommendation?
A little call for a motion.
I, I recommend that we end the emergency declaration.
And I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any other discussion of this?
No, I guess my, the only caveat or clarifying question would be, if there is an uptick, does this remain a power of ours to invoke? Should we need to follow the guidance of the health department, say, of the state?
On, on all the same logic that we called the first one, referencing World Health Organization, the governor and president. And if you see local conditions being very different, just the same as when a hurricane gets canceled, we may have an emergency that nobody else has.
Does that mean? The unmasking of schools is gonna have an effect that we're gonna see among families. I mean, I don't know that, I mean, is this resolution something we can push out of us to see what the, the effects of the unmasking of schools are?
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution, the seconded. We can ask the person who made the motion to withdraw that motion and come up with a new motion to put this on the table for a month.
I think we have to vote on it. Yeah, I would, I would, I would like to keep it.
Okay, so.
Keep my, keep my motion.
So motion is to accept this resolution, it's been seconded and commented on, then we'll ask the clerk to call the rule.
That's it.
Absolutely, yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Briscoe?
Yes.
Myers?
Matt?
Munson?
Yes.
Pink?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. The, uh, I'm gonna do the staff reports, let me ask, uh, Mr. Wallace, since the signing of the judge revolution was on the, uh, a consent calendar, do we still have to do anything on that?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't overlooking something, so. Staff reports, Mr. Wallace.
Um, staff work in the past month has largely touched on topics that we've already talked about. And we just added with, with my gratitude to the events committees for looking out to, um, Bachelor Festival on Fourth of July. Um, we're in good shape on, um, partnership with Stan for their estate festivities. That includes a number of good volunteer opportunities that Ms. Cruz had mentioned. Um, trail improvements, tree planting, street art, we need to refresh the spray paint murals on the sidewalk. James River Association and the Nature Conservancy are excellent partners for those events. Uh, we're continuing our downtown, um, ADC permit. Um, and I'm looking forward to, um, uh, happy hour, block party and concerts. Um, after, uh, folks maybe get their, uh, get their feet muddy, uh, planting trees and improving the trails, um, then we can, uh, we can stop around town a little bit. So that, that's good party planning, um, Stan's working great, um, we could use some help shipping the word out here in the next month.
How many can you have left and when do they expire?
Sixteen per year and we'll renew that license for, for next year. Um, we've only used four.
And that, that's for July, what, what is the date?
Uh, yes, we, we got it.
And if sixteen left between now and four?
Yes, there are eleven left, uh, between now and July, that's funny. Um, using it as a, it's, is, the, the, the limit is not ADC, the limit is how many events we can do. And if, um, if those things successful, um, certainly something.
So will we have the renewal before the Fourth of July?
Um.
Or is there a delay period?
If, if we were. I'll, I was expecting to go ahead and renew it, you know, with no lags, it would be available for July fourth. I'm talking with Chief Jenkins about the best way to support that. We have had trouble with public intoxication on July fourth in the past. Maybe this helps us structure that in a good way or maybe it's a bad idea, I'm not sure.
Tickets?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Wallace?
Just to follow up the tree planting, cause I'm very excited about this. Uh, do you have a date in mind with that or you're working with JRA to set up a date for the tree plantings and boulders and all that?
Um, that's on, that's on the day, those are, um, Saturday, the twenty-third.
Yeah.
And the, um, the signups are hosted through the nature conservancy. So there's, they're pushing that out and I expect to see some volunteers from the Richmond and Charlottesville areas coming to town to help with it. Um, the trees come to us at a very good price from the state forestry office in Augusta County. They have a nursery and they're, they're selling sweat and trashy trees that we can put in all of our low lying areas to help with erosion and water quality.
Can you share that out with us so that we can get the word out about that too? Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Price, do you have anything you want to leave with us before we depart?
I, I did not come with any reports or anything, however, during the evening, I did look up and according to the Canal Society and James River Ratto Festival, June twenty-second would be the date, Thursday.
You have, you have a meeting Wednesday?
We do, it's a special budget meeting, we don't have a regular board meeting until, um, April the sixth, which will be on first line back and lane on the court.
Probably won't be necessary for us to meet on Thursday. It probably won't be necessary for us to meet on Thursday.
Not this, not this week.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else have anything on their mind, they'd like to get off the chest today? Or their mind, whichever. We hear motion to adjourn. And we are adjourned, thank you everybody on council for everything you do.